All right, well, welcome everyone to the August 2024 zoning board meeting. First off, we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. So if we could.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our chairwoman is not here to mention, she asked me to fill in. I will do the best I can. All right, so first, her third agenda item, approval of the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes from last month? Did anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
The one we talked about, yes.
For, um, the house on Churchill. On the porch. Did you vote yes on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the minutes it said that you were in.
Did it say they are?
Yeah, Eric, we talked about it and you, you actually seconded the motion and that's what I said before. It was not you.
Supported the motion for that.
But if we could just amend that.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'm interested to do the assessment.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right, secretaries. More.
More.
Let me imagine.
Sorry, I was trying to update them.
All right. All right, so our number four agenda item is for Ty Zelinski, 130 Dowan hours street west in Syracuse. Tax map ID 062-01-18.0. He is looking for a seven foot five inch side yard setback variance for the construction of a, we'll call it a shed, not a shed, but a storage area off the rear of his home. So, um, yeah, we're gonna go second. Can we get a motion to waive the, really have the public?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Uh, can we get a motion to open the public hearing? Sorry, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose? Thank Eric, may the second. All right, Mr. Zelinski, can you come up to the?
I am not the Churchill. Sir, I don't, I'm Phil York. You're, I am Ty's grand uncle. Oh, that age of wedding rehearsal for.
He did.
I need.
You guys.
Some family.
Thank you for filling in. Would you be able to come up to the podium and just explain to the board what it is that he is looking to do and why?
He needs additional storage space for, um, snow blower, lawnmower, that sort of thing. So that he can hit the car in his garage. He has a one and a half year old boy and a month ago that he stayed at twins. So it's kind of important that we be able to get the car into the garage this year.
So he is at that wedding rehearsal.
He is at the wedding rehearsal.
Sleep.
I will be at the wedding tomorrow, but I don't need to be at the wedding. He's at the wedding party. I'm not.
So, uh, that'll be right off the back of the house, back end of its.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. And this could be about eight foot deep?
Eight foot deep, yeah. Put it wide. Front, sides will be, um, siding method approximately matching the house. We change the roof from a metal roof to a shingle roof. That will be close to matching the shingles.
Spaces between where the front of this will be and that big tree.
There is a bridge in the back and by notes. Yeah. We, we did clear the tree by about five foot or so, five inches. And it's, it's outdated, it's almost like it's gonna come down in the future. I'm sorry.
Little healthy for the street.
Tree, yeah, yeah. Looks healthy.
And that, um, you said you're good, it's a match society.
Yeah. Shingles, yeah, it's like a, that's like a burn apple deciding.
Yeah.
And we have, uh, color that very closely approximates what's on there. Getting an exact match for the exciting. But it's, it's, it's close. Very close.
Is there any power run into that?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any one different questions?
No.
Is there any? Have you spoken to the neighbors, sir?
I have.
Well, do you know what Ty has?
I don't know for a fact that he does, I suggested that he do that, yeah.
Really not.
What we do send out those to the neighbors, they're out there. Um, and it's not coming any further over.
It's actually further away than the existing garage by about.
Right.
Five inches.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a seven crime.
You're building, you're, he's building this himself?
He's building it with my guys. A lot of my guys. I have, I.
So your hair is the contractor.
I, well, I'm a retired teacher, I did have a small construction company a long time ago. I do plants, I grow plants all the time.
They're variable.
Thank you.
All right, so if there's no other comments or questions, the motion is closed, public hearing. Okay? Second. All right, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right, so if you wanna have a seat, now what we'll do is those five questions that are in the packet that Ty filled out, we're gonna go through them as a board.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll take the determination from there. All right. So. All right. So question, uh, number one, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method. I don't, so what he's looking at, divide off.
Probably best spot.
I think so, yeah. Second question, uh, will the variance cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or the nearby properties? And, uh, plus he's getting storage and be able to park his car in the garage, which is always a good thing. Is the request substantial? I mean, it's in line with the more, the houses, the garden as well, so. Uh, whether the request will have adverse environmental effects on the neighborhood or surrounding areas? And whether the need for the variance is appropriate?
Yes.
Yes. So. All right, um, with that being said, the ZDA after taking into consideration, um, the above five factors, uh, finds the benefit of the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. ZDA further finds that a variance for seven feet, five inches, right here. Is the minimum variance that should be granted in order to, or in order to preserve or protect the character of the neighborhood, the ZDA further finds, um, that um, there's no significant impact on the environment, therefore, um, we propose a type two action on security and no further review of that is required. Would that be an incentive, would somebody like to make a motion to approve or deny that there is?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, zoning board grant area variance to Ty Zelinski. Property located 130 Dowan hours street west, East surface, Doralville 3057. Tax map ID 062 point dash 01 dash 18.0. Various granted purpose. Construction of a eight foot by fourteen foot eight inch attached open storage shed. Various branded for seven point five inches.
Seventy foot.
Seven. Needs a variance of seven foot five.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Small requesting seven, seven inch various, a setback rather, need various of seven foot five, uh, inches, right? Just like a B from fifteen foot side.
Eric, the second is it? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion granted. Please, uh. I thought it was.
Okay, we pick up the voting.
We will mail it to you, so it probably won't get mailed out until early next week, but I will approve it tomorrow. I mean, you've got your stamp plan, so there's nothing.
Yeah.
Nothing stopping you until we're just created.
Where, where should we start work?
Yes. We will get the, we will get the permit mailed out in two spots.
Okay.
There's just, I will get the variance sent into mine to sign it, or the clerk and everybody heard about the things, but yeah, you are essentially just one.
And for my, we have a whole stuff.
You'll have to, you'll have to call for that postal inspection, correct? And then at that point, I'm hoping on one day the permit's issued just now in the mail, so if you're happy. The doubt. Yeah, you can have that as soon as possible to give you the call.
Okay.
I'll get out. Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Have a great evening. All right. So. Your, um, the room air, correct?
Excuse me?
Are you with room air?
That's, no, you're at Hope.
Oh, yeah, so we're right, we're right here right now. Yeah.
All right, so next agenda item, Mr. Madden, 5269 Hope Lane. Needs a seven feet foot front yard setback variance for the, uh, construction of a shed slash workshop, right? Can you get a reading of the, um, public? Sorry. Public notice, sorry. Um, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion to open the public hearing. I'll make a motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Hurry to serve.
Company, I will be providing. It has a lot of. Well, first off, thanks for having me here tonight. First thing I gotta do is apologize. All right. Last time I was here, well, no. I didn't do a great job of explaining, I didn't really understand the process. Things didn't go well. I got a little chipped and I'm an apology. Here I go, see that for me too, so I'm sorry. Basically, I got frustrated, I didn't really. Tonight, hopefully, I can make this clear of what I'm trying to accomplish and hopefully we can come through a deal, but it's good for the town, good for the neighborhood. So, as you know, what I'm trying to do here, I'm trying to put a, an outbuilding on my property that I can use to store my tools, that's what I'm trying. I have a, I have a two car garage. It's going on this tough situation until I really can't expand it. And this is a much more reasonable way to get storage on my property. Very fortunate to have quite a large lot that has quite a bit of room to put another building and not be obnoxious to them. Okay? So, last time I was trying to put it close to the road, I get that, that's not. So what I'm proposing is to put it in line with the houses on Dolly, they're all forty foot back, so I would be, would basically look like another small house on Dolly, so it would be on my property. I'm not gonna have a driveway to it. And I have, I showed you these pictures in here in this packet. They make these things that, that just sit along the grids and like grass grows it, so it looks like nice, but you can drive on it. So you can get up. That's, if you look at this packet here.
Their tunnels, their tool.
Yeah, they use a lot. So I'm just gonna go through the packet one through, one through ten and kind of give you the, the visual of the property. So this was basically originally three locks that somebody put together and, and that's why it's the size that it is. My house is this Craftsman style and number one of this picture packet here. It sits up on this hill and that's why I detached garage there next to it. And you see how steep it is there, so it's very tough to head onto that garage, because you have steepness and I have septic over there, because these areas have septic. Number two is another view of my house, shows you the Craftsman style in yellow and gray, I guess. And then the next picture. Number three. This is a view of my old tree block, so I have recently bought this place back in days because it had all these trees reminded us of Central Park. This was a single story house that we turned into a double story Craftsman style house. So we bought the worst house in the neighborhood, turned it, nice house in the neighborhood, I wouldn't recommend that, it's very costly. But, uh, it worked out. Okay? Number four, this is a view down, my driveway is off Hope Lane, this is a view down Dolly Lane. And these are the, the willow trees on pockets out that kind of line my property and somebody planted here to go. And there's five of them. Next one. These are the first two willow trees of that five, and I'm on Dolly. There's that maple that we planted, I don't know, twelve years ago. The next picture. This is where I was trying to do last. I was trying to be close to the road, but not constrict that maple, so I was gonna be between those two willow trees. But be, before that maple, that's why I needed to be about twenty five feet from the road, because that would have fitted. But now, that's, that's not a good plan. A better plan on the next one, that's again showing the maple tree where I tried to put it last time, I would have cut that maple tree down. The next one, now there's these two trees. I can fit it between those trees, I can go forty feet back. I can be before that garden, I can be level, see that house on the left? That's three seventeen Dolly and I could be equal to that, so it'll kind of look like another house on Dolly Road, but without a driveway. Next one. You can see there's, there's a better picture of Dolly, I'd be up, up in there, and you can see that tree line that we planted. So there's a privacy fence between three seventeen Dolly and Hope Lane. Privacy fence there with trees, not a natural, a natural fence, I guess. The next one, once again, another picture to show, there's, there's Dolly at me over here. Then number eleven. This gives you the visual, you can see it, now I'm looking at Dolly, and this is where the shed outbuilding would be. And you can see there's a natural tree line, it would wind up at the front of that. Next one gives you a better side, you can barely see the house here, you can see how treated it is, you can't even see that house, so they couldn't even see this building. There's the garden that it would be in front of. Would be right in there. And the, and the willow trees would be down at the front of that, forty five feet or so, that would be, would be basically centered between those two willows. It's going to be a Craftsman style shed, that's what the next picture is. And that's not exactly what it's gonna be, but it's gonna have the dormers. Okay, it's gonna have a very nice garage door that, that opens and it's going to match the colors of the house. And it's ten, ten feet, ten inches high. It's gonna have Craftsman decorations to match the house, the colors to match the house. And, uh, if I, if I can get a couple on, it's, that's about two feet, I think you gotta be thirteen one.
Under seventeen.
Under seventeen, oh, I could easily put a couple on.
Could you just clarify something for a quick mission?
Yes.
Your house is like a three inch color.
I got yellow, I got two tone.
Okay, so are you doing, gonna do the yellow or the?
It's gonna match it exactly, my wife isn't gonna allow.
Two.
Something Mickey Mouse, it's gonna be very.
Two tone like the?
It's gonna be all.
Put your garden on the same. Um, there's two gardens next to each other, if you're one of the smaller ones. It'll be right.
That's the setback on. This is. The next is, no, this is the, what I'm proposing to put on. This is, this is what I would drive. Now, if you go to this large print here. See, I had that drawing drawn a few years ago for a pool, I was thinking about doing. But I didn't end up doing it, just decided not to do it. So I blew this up and this gives you a better picture. I put the willow trees up. This is the maple. This is the forty foot line. This is the twenty, twenty feet equal twenty four foot block. That's it.
The bridge is the shed.
Yes, this would be the shed. See, it looks like this. It's two willows. The five willows, here's that maple tree. This is forty feet back, so Dolly's right over here. This is twenty three feet up. The Dolly. Okay? It's that garden. It's not the garden. You see, I showed that to you. That's my, that's my great plan. What I, what I'd like to do. And I did talk to all my neighbors, they had no problem with it before, I'm sure they'll have no problem, I didn't say now I'm gonna move it forty feet back, but that's, that is, bottom line, that's a better plan, it's gonna look more coherent with the neighborhood, it's gonna look like a house on Dolly. Yeah, it's gonna look like a tiny house on Dolly. I would run power to it.
Is the door going to be facing on Dolly?
Yes, it would. It would look. When you look at this magazine here, this brochure.
It makes you think that it's not.
I understand, that's just to get a visual of the house. If there were this stuff. Maybe this, this Craftsman style.
So this is gonna face Dolly.
Yeah.
Be like this.
Yeah, exactly.
My house would be over here, my home is over here.
This would be like here.
Facing.
Facing between the door. The main counter.
The, uh, the payers, how wide are you gonna think?
I said two, four foot section wide. For four feet, say about three and a half feet between them and four feet. Just gonna have two, two sections.
I have a, a drawing that Mr. Madden proposed.
And that, that would be the perfect, so. Oh, I was asking about a curb cut, it doesn't. That doesn't hate it, so.
I'm just gonna put them on next line. Yep.
Right.
But I want it to look like, I want it to look like grass, and I want it to.
Right. Now, we, we just have to ask that, obviously, if it's wide enough, you know, I need to do the curb cut or the wall or something. Thank you for the.
Make sure the picture's super, that does sound kind of clarified a little.
Why didn't you put the pool in?
I was thinking about doing an A ground pool or a, a pool, uh, a complete pool house, in indoor, with a separate building. Bought a hot tub. Do they ever buy a hot tub? Oh, I don't use. So I'm just afraid that's right now on. I know, sorry. So I was gonna, I was very excited to put this pool in and then I realized I'll probably spend much money on this pool and I won't use as much. I don't all use it, I like to ride my horse. It's getting a place to store. Don't have to.
Make it so. White just vanishing to the shed.
Exactly.
I got that.
It'll be nice.
Eric, do you have any other questions?
So, what about you? Didn't you say that you were gonna put wood shop in there?
Yeah, I'll have some tools in there, stuff like that. It's twenty, what I'm proposing here is twenty by twenty four, so let's take, you know, there's plenty of room for, for some tools in there, stuff like that.
It's square.
Twenty by twenty four. That's why I'm gonna run power to it, so I can run tools.
But not another repair shop?
No, I'm not, I'm that's good.
Is it gonna be winterized?
I'm not gonna insulate it at this point, I don't know if I will down the road, I'm not gonna do that this time, I'm just gonna run power to it.
Is it gonna be water?
No.
It's gonna be electricity?
Just, just electricity, it's gonna be on a pad, I'm not gonna put a, I'm not gonna put a cement pad up there. The, you know, the, the timbers that comes with it. I don't wanna put a pad in there, do all that, I just wanna set it down and then if anyone wants to get rid of it, then get rid of it. So, Dave Flazare of Amis Structures, he's on Route twenty, on the way to Cass, he's done a tremendous amount of buildings in this area. I looked around and he has some of the best stuff and this is a very nice quality here. It's nice about him is you can give him your paint samples and they will paint it to match the color of your house. What's that?
Paint good for cells, they create a very good.
So, the reason why you want, after the last meeting, I was told you were going to put it within, so you didn't need a variance. So now you're changing.
Because I need.
Because you need one.
So.
To set up.
Go. What was the reason why you didn't decide it against putting it where you didn't need a variance?
When I look at my property, the symmetry of my property, the best place to put it without disturbing things is between those two willows. And, in, in all honesty, I, I didn't think I needed it, but I do.
I do, I do like that it's back a lot further. And back that's where to feed those on the line. Neighborhood, I bring it up closer, closer to his house.
Would you think about, will we get further off the hill where that garden is?
I'd have to move that card. It's, it, the further you go up that hill, the steeper it gets. I have to do the site work.
Yeah, pictures of her, just go back, it's careful. Right, it's careful.
Yeah, it's.
The side with the doors is wider than the side.
I'm sorry?
The side that has the doors is twenty four and the long way, the windows are is twenty.
Correct. It's twenty feet deep. Twenty four feet wide.
Do we have, uh, any neighbors? Any neighbors?
Nope, they're not.
What did we have from before?
They'll see, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, I, I walked around every. I walked around every neighbor.
Yeah, we never received any communication back with the letters that we mailed out from the first application or from this application.
Close, public hearing. Okay? Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Third. Ted. Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. Oppose? All right, public hearing is closed. So why don't we, uh, you can have a seat if you want. We'll go through the five questions. All right. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance.
Yes.
Yes. Whether the undesirable. Whether the undesirable change would be produced or whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. I think that's enough. Uh, whether the, whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. I think my reason for saying no on that is before, when it was for rotted bushes of the road, I think it did. Uh, I think having it setback further, it does blend it in along that property line better. Um, and again, that between that property and this other property, there is a steady tree line there, so there is natural buffering between the two homes. So really, the only way you're gonna see it is if you're coming up hope, turning on the dolly. Maybe else have any thoughts on that question?
So I'm hearing you say that landscaping or how it's landscaped is important. If it should go to an approval status, you would want to consider.
Traditional.
Traditional.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would, that would most likely be one of the conditions that I recommend would be, should, should we approve it, right? Just having one of the conditions be that, you know, let's say a windstorm comes through and knocks that roll of trees down. Um, between you and three seventeen, the deaths maintain. Right, so if something comes down. So, Rob. Uh. Right.
Yeah, I'm just not, I'm just not for the shed being the front wall. Front of the house. Just not. I don't think they allow it to whip. I just, I just don't, just not for it.
Trying to, in this location on that property, aside from, we'll get back to where the garden is, where else is there? That we've got.
You could put it right where you didn't need a variance. Doesn't want to do that.
How many feet to, actually, where's that? So, so where is that?
Yeah. Sir? How much space is between where the proposed corner of the shed is and the maple tree?
That's maple tree for our house. Tree here and maple tree over there. Make that there, that's. But we'll move the house and we pass away. Make it just like.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking about trimming it down, but the corner, the corner where you're proposing that shed right now and that tree, how, you know, how much distance is between those? Show you on the bigger one there.
Or this one's wrong.
So if your, if your corner's right here, that's right. You know how much distance that is?
It's one sixteen, it's a four, so that's, it's an inch, that's gonna be sixteen feet. The actual feet for the tree.
Right.
It's just that you're cutting down. The tree though?
No.
That tree?
And that's part of the structure that we had before. Not that. So you're saying that's probably about sixteen feet to twenty?
It's a sort of border, it's probably seven feet. He is six, seven feet off that tree.
You, you wanna finish going through these questions and then we can go back to what we're keeping on this number two question. Alright, so, uh, question three. Whether a request of variance is substantial?
Yes.
Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? I'd say no. I, I don't see where it would cause. Again, going back, the last time he was here, where that was placed, I would say yes to that. But I think pushing it back further makes it more allowed to those other properties. What do you guys think about that?
I think that it's good to have to, to make it look the same style and same color without making it.
So you got an answer?
No, I had the question. You wanted me to.
Okay. So then you'd say yes to that question?
So you know. Oh, yes, I'd say yes.
Yeah, that it has adverse impact. Okay. Mark?
I just have one question.
Very well.
Where you're proposing now?
Yes.
You have. I'm gonna be there in between us. Six feet, four inch, four inch, so. So, could you move this up? On the other. How far do you move it towards the garden? We're gonna get to the same two, but you're gonna have the doors here, right? Right. Yeah, this. Got a clear shot in between trees.
Yeah, and this is all clear to me like that. Yes, you move it, go ten feet further up, but don't you want ten feet further back?
I probably feel better doing this further up this way, because where's the, where's the front of the house that you said?
It'll be right there. It's gonna be even.
The front of the, next house, which you also own a doll, it's right there.
Right. That's where it'll be even, this must be in front of you.
That would change it then, Mark, so that it would only be maybe a six or seven foot.
Fair enough. I'm not, I'm not gonna be anywhere in front of that.
Yeah, we did verify that the three seventeen dolly off the road was the same setback was that forty foot setback.
That's what's in the book of house. All those houses are basically. Each, basically, it's about forty.
We could, we did a GIS measurement and based on that, we were relatively confident that three seventeen dolly, the, the base of it is forty feet off the front yard off the setback.
Same point. Yes. And all the houses that matched that, pretty much about forty back.
If you want to, I think.
So the front of your shed. Line up. Line up with the front of this house.
Can we understand that? Can't see it off there, it's a very, well, you can see in the pictures, a very private tree line.
It's all a tree line.
So the neighbor is not gonna see the shed, let's say we're looking. And we plan it back through.
It's roughly where that tree's.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're looking at, I was gonna screenshot it and draw it on there, but.
Oh, there. Look at that. Yeah. You're talking, it's, it's gonna be right.
On the center spot.
Here. In front of that garden. We're just gonna be looking at it, be, this is very approximately one. You see all the, the mess with all the trees I have on top of it, it's a lot. These guys can't see it, it's gonna be right in the sort of area. Even with that shed. That's where the garden's looking.
That's, that's very wrong.
Go a little bit too far.
Yeah. Like in line with this three seven.
Correct.
So does that change the variance need any distance wise?
Pushing it back?
What that?
No.
Well, I'm saying, is there any way to push it? Push it.
Push it towards.
Very, so I'm asking towards in front of this house.
Yeah, I think the location I'm looking at now is where he's looking here.
Right.
Right, so if he pushes it backwards.
That doesn't change anything, you know?
Correct.
Right, that's why I was just asking, it's those trees. I'm saying if you took that skirt to the right, any.
But it's pretty runny, those, I think.
Yeah, that's right. It's, I think, it's right here.
It, it, either way, right, that's not change the need for variance because you can't go that full, you don't have twenty feet to go.
No.
So. And Rob, I asked you to cut down the maple shit. Uh, why don't we finish going through these questions about? And, uh, and then we'll take it from there. So we're, we'll go back to two in a minute, but, um, question number five. So we did, we did four.
Wait.
Yeah. So we could go back to, do you wanna go back to the beginning and start over on the questions? With that, just I'll clarify it a little more. I, I figured. Want that, so. Alright, question number one. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance?
Yes.
We say yes to that.
It's a brass.
Yes.
That brass.
Um, number two. Whether the undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. I had said no before and then we talked about it, but we didn't answer it, so. You said no, I'd say, that's what we were saying. People were about. Clear.
The question, whether the variance is gonna create an undesirable change to the neighborhood. If there were a tree there and you moved it back, it feels that effect's gonna be approximately the same. You know, it's a strange, it's an unusual law.
Where, if it was where, if it was, he had the ability to move it that seventeen feet, he would have, cause it would be a variance. Um, would that have the same effect?
Right.
Right? Without the need for variance, if he put it in, it would have the same effect that.
Still gonna be, would still maybe be an effect there.
Right.
But not right in front of the house. Look out the front door, you can see this, he's way forward.
So you're just twenty feet between the shed and the garden? And he moves it ten feet towards the garden, does that make you more afraid of leaning on it? Is that interesting? If you would or?
Well, there are no difference to it. So that doesn't change the variance itself?
I know that. So does it make you feel more?
I think if it went back a little bit further, I'd. It would, I would too. Can I ask you a question there? Would it look more symmetry if it was lined up with the houses on top? Actually, it was offset, it looked awkward. I would say it would look more.
Accessory structure.
Yeah.
As opposed to primary. So that makes it.
But if you you're not in the middle and you went back ten feet, so now he's fifty foot off the road. You're still gonna, still gonna need a seventeen and a half foot variance on the other side.
Right.
But I see what you're saying, to go back a, e- even further to his less. Yeah, I think I look at it a little bit different too. Would that, would that be something that you could do where you go back?
I understand what you're saying.
And that would still leave you about ten feet between.
I can, listen, I wanna work with you. I'd like to get, yes, say you're on my project. I'm gonna ask you another question.
Sure.
So, when I was still in that pool project. Put this in the back. We asked the architect, who wrote this beautiful plan, spelled it out, it was perfectly, perfectly cat, that's about drawn the scales, drawn the scale.
Yeah.
So he's asked this, so he's asking about, what are the setbacks? I'm gonna follow along this email we do that we got here, because I didn't bring enough glasses, but. So Mike Oldie, that's my architect, drew all this stuff up, put in his project, uh, December second of twenty twenty-one. Uh, said, geez, we'd like to get a clarification on these, on these yards, alright? It goes back and forth. And then Lisa B. Moot is not here, she said. I apologize, I had thought, I'd gotten back to you. Doug and I, and this was December second, fourth of that, Doug and I spoke to the attorney. And here's her response, in the entirety of what is on the map of a single parcel, what appears to be that he has two front yards for zoning purposes. That's what they told me on.
This clarification for the, the minutes. You referred to this event, who was the?
Yeah. Works here.
And, well, the planner.
Yeah, so she checked with the attorney and the attorney one, is the one who gave her the answer. And it was two front yards for zoning purposes. I don't know who it was, it was me third. And he said, can you please provide a response to where you posed below? And then he said, she goes, there are two front yards and two side yards for this property and then then Mike Oldie had come back, thank you, Lisa. Okay, so when he drew this up, that's why he has this is twenty feet right here. This is forty and this is twenty. And that's why. Personally, I, I, I think. I told Tom that I had this writing. Tom said, geez, I shouldn't be able to honor that.
I, I don't understand, there, is that the two front yards? That's what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, that's why I had forty feet off the doll. That's what they're telling you, but, but back in twenty, December of twenty-one, I was told I didn't by, by the office. And that's why the plan was drawn up, and in theory, I wouldn't even need to be here.
So I, without, we can't go, that whole thing, I'm only gonna tell you that there's two front yards. That's what we know today, that we're here and that's we figured out. So that's what we're working on.
But you understand wrong. Pull something different, not too long.
I think we see.
You're wrong, you're incorrect.
But it doesn't matter.
Can you swear I, where I, I denied his permit, I can clarify that.
On the floor?
On his shed right now.
On his shed, okay, go.
So often in time, people say that the town has set things that we have not, I asked Mr. Madden to provide writing, which he did. I did not think he was going to be able to. I, even though he had it in writing, was still not going to be able to approve it because based on our town code, and I'll share this screen right now. Based on town code, here's what I use. Based on town code, general standards for lots, a corner lot, a front yard setback shall be required on each street, a single family lawn shall, lot shall only have one side yard. Said yard shall be that yard opposite the front yard with a greater frontage. This yard right here, dolly has one fifteen point two, both laid it has one fourteen. So opposite would be side, which would be this one right here, adjacent would be this. Meaning this is the rear yard.
I, I mean, I'm not sure that's, that's really productive. I think we're, where are we supposed to be today? With this, um, so you know, working the two front yards, so that's what we've been working on for a month or two or however long. So.
So if we go back to the five questions.
Yes.
So question two, whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties? You were saying, Claire said, if you go back ten feet, it's a less undesirable effect. So it said that if yes, you'd say no.
Exactly. If you want further towards, towards the one of the way from the roof. You wanna pick that, please, go back to the house, which would be the rear. Yes. Plus.
Plus this.
Plus this.
That's a bunch.
Okay. So that changes that, okay. So then question three, whether the request of variance is substantial? Right, that doesn't change. So the answer to that, we said yes before, it's still substantial there. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood if we go off of that beat there?
I would say no.
And I would say no.
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, whether the electric difficulty was self created, yeah, he wants to. It's the source of. Right? Right? So, okay, so now with that. The ZBA, after taking into consideration the above five factors, finds that benefits of the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. Uh, ZBA further finds that a variance for seventeen feet six inches, right?
Yep.
Um, is the minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Provided.
Provided that.
Condition, right.
We have a condition, uh, I was gonna add that in a minute, but yes.
Yeah, how about the condition is that it is going to be moved?
Right, so the condition would be that as presented, or the plan as presented, that we're back ten feet.
Four fifty feet.
Yes, and then the second condition would be that that edger was maintained between three seventeen and your approach. So, okay. So with that, there is agreement that there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore, I propose a type two action on secret. And no further reviews required, based upon that, would someone make a motion to grant or deny the area variance for this?
Uh, we're gonna have the.
Yep, you have.
We'll talk about, start, start with that, and then we'll.
No, this is the. Sorry, there, just make sure you have those finished.
A motion to grant for rear setback variance of seventeen feet to Paulman, property five six. Five two six nine, home lane favorable, tax map number zero nine six dash, dash, zero eight, dash, zero three, dash, zero three. The variance being granted for the construction of a twenty by twenty four foot shed with stipulations.
Ten.
Ten, ten, ten feet in what direction, so we can be sure.
Uh, so fifty, so then we should say fifty feet on that, off the, off of doll.
Correct.
So I have a certain test, this number is wrong.
Oh, it's fifty feet, oh, I'm sorry, it's, yeah, no, this is doll.
A doll, okay, I saw you.
That's the house on doll, so it's going. But fifty feet off of doll, okay, so if that's the motion.
Ten feet back further than doll.
Right, so you have forty.
So with that, would one of you like to say?
No, it still has to be that.
Oh.
The which one?
Yeah.
That had, uh, the, the.
I mentioned.
Did you?
Yeah, I mentioned it, yeah, I mean, you did, yeah, I mentioned, we go back, maintain the.
Uh, yeah, can you?
Well, he did a extra, at the end, you just did an extra dash, you were right. So he was, take that part off, but she'll have the, she's her, her, so.
Um, I, I would also add, you're going back the ten feet, because this is. A setback that, that nothing's been built in between the shed and the setback line. Right, because it was right on the setback, and I was saying, you worked to get this variance, you have to move it back.
Yeah.
So the condition would be that nothing's built in between the setback line and the shed.
No, we're built.
No, I can't.
The condition that it'd be the same two colors as that I saw.
So if we have all those conditions in there, would one of you like to say?
I have one question.
Yeah.
So, with moving ten feet back. What are, what are your plans now that? I don't know how much smoke there is there, because I haven't looked at it, but what would you plan on doing as far as adjusting for that? Terrain, perhaps?
If you have site work, I guess spend more money, that's what I.
Tell me site project, anyway, don't have to have to push it back. By one or two.
I second your motion.
All right. Favor. I, most, most in best, thank you. Congratulations, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for working with us, thank you for working with me. So, we don't have the other applicant here to make it, actually, too, online. Collin, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm already tonight.
I'm well, how are you? Thanks for having me.
Joining us. Um, thank you for your patience.
Absolutely.
So, uh, first off, we'll start, um. So, uh. All right, agenda item number six, have a good night, Mr. Men. All right, agenda item number six, Collin Davis, seventy two fifty six Rumor Road, East Syracuse tax map is zero seven six dot, that's zero three, dash, one five, dot, zero. You needed fifteen foot front yard setback variance, and a five foot side yard setback variance for the construction of an above ground pool. So, can we get a motion to waive the public?
Make your motion.
Right, so, all favor? Uh, I, opposed, okay. Um, can we get a motion to open the public here?
Make your motion to open the public back here.
All favor? Uh, I, okay, you have that? Or, or.
Yeah, it's right.
All right. All right, um, Collin, if you could, if you could just explain to, uh, the board what it is you're looking to do, and why it is that you need a variance?
Yep, I'm, um. I wanna put an above ground pool in for my kids, and as you see, I'm on the corner lot, so. What I considered to be my backyard, side yard, is actually considered my front. Um, so there, where I already have the pre-existing patio, I wanted to put an above ground pool off of that patio. So where that wooden fence is right now, the fence would come down and the, and, uh, the patio would lead up to the pool.
And are you gonna have fence all the way around that pool?
Yes, yep, actually, they just finished installing a brand new.
You just showed me an updated picture, so. It wasn't fully there when I looked.
Yeah, they just came yesterday, actually, and finished it, but I still have half the wooden fence to take down.
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, um. Claire, do you have questions? So obviously, the tough part with this one, because it is a front yard and it's on a full side, so, well, part of it is, um. She has an odd shaped lot because of that. Ten, two front yards. It's a two front yard, like, here, to you.
We put it on the other side.
So that, yeah, uh, Collin, did you hear this question?
What, about the other side, putting out the other side, you know, I have two reasons, really, that I don't want to do that. One, that's where my kids play their sports, right? Like, that's where my son has his lacrosse rebounder half the time, and the soccer nuts, and my daughter does field hockey, so that's just an open space for them. Um, but two, I would have to, we would have to track through, like, the garage to be able to get to the pool. This would be right off my sliding glass door to a patio, you know, which would just be nicer for a pool setup.
Yeah, and looking at it, I, I looked at it, this, um, that thought process that, you have that side door right there, right?
Uh, I saw from the post, the posts were up.
Yeah, did you see the picture where it done?
No, I didn't see it later.
Well, doing that, Claire, do you have any questions?
So, fences are allowed in front yards?
Yeah, no restrictions for fences.
I remember that now.
Yes.
Did we hear from any of the neighbors?
So, yes, we did get a phone call from a Miranda Campkins, who resides at seventy two fifty two Rumor. Um, said she had no concerns with the request for the pool to be, um, installed at seventy two fifty six.
Collin, did you talk to, or spoken with your neighbor, uh, directly behind you on that circle?
Um. On Chantilly?
Yes.
Yes, she texted me and just asked, and I explained what I was doing, and she said, okay, that makes sense.
No, no objections, so.
No.
Because I think, just looking at where you're placed, and I think she's the one that, obviously, is the most affected.
Right, right, I mean, but with the fence going up, it really wouldn't. You know what I mean, like, I, I felt like it would be more of a eyesore for her.
Uh, that's it. Okay, and that, uh, pool have all the necessary alarms and whatnot on it? Swimming in, right? You're, you're, you're working on that up, did you hear that question?
About the alarms?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, I bought the, the full package, or I, you know, I put a deposit down, on a full package, which includes all, all of what is needed legally.
Right. We always have to ask that question to be sure.
Okay.
Who, who's, uh, doing the installation?
Liverpool, Pool and Spa.
Okay. Okay.
Does that fence have a gate on it anywhere?
The white fence, yes, it has one five foot gate, um, toward the front, toward the trees, toward the, toward Rumor.
Any further questions here?
Nope.
Claire, two questions. One is that, okay. Um. Any, anybody else online, no?
No.
If any in the audience, uh, know, sort of, of areas, all right? All right, all in favor?
I.
I, opposed? Next, uh, so what we're gonna do is just like we did with the last two, we're gonna go through those five questions that you filled out in your packet. Uh, as a board, and then we'll, we'll take it from there. All right, question number one, uh, whether benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? Yes. Say could be other than that, right? Could, um. Two, whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? No. Um, three, whether the requested variance is substantial? I don't think either one is substantial to that degree. Um. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Uh, so, the rest of, there may be other houses in that neighborhood that have pools, and this one just happens to be in the corner. It's a corner lot, so it's gonna be a little river, but. It's not like in her front yard of the, of the other street, so. Um. All right, whether the electric difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Yes. So with that, uh, ZBA, after taking into consideration the above five factors, finds that the benefits of the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. ZBA further finds that a variance for a front yard setback of fifteen feet. Um, and a. variance of five feet per side yard, um, is the minimum variance that would be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. And the health, safety, and welfare of the community, uh, ZBA further grants the variance as requested with, well, there, there. See, that's it, uh, there's agreement that there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore, propose type two action on secret, and no further review is required. Based upon that, would someone make a motion to grant or deny area variance for this applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the city board grant the area variance to Collin Davis. For the property located at seventy two fifty six Rumor Road. Syracuse, New York, phone three oh five seven, tax map ID zero seven six point, dash, zero three, dash, one five point zero. variance granted for the purpose of construction. Twenty four foot wide above ground pool. Fence is already in place. Variance. Of fifteen feet, right, relief from the required thirty foot front yard setback. And. Various. Five feet to provide relief from the required fifteen foot side yard setback.
Any conditions?
Well.
The, the fence remains, I mean, it's up there.
The fence, I mean, the fence be there as long as the pool is there.
Right, if, if the fence didn't exist, that would be a condition, so.
All right, is there a condition that, that, that has to be a lock on that latch on Rumor for the gate?
Yeah, for the above ground pools, the pool, barrier, the pool wall itself acts as the barrier.
Yeah.
I hope, uh, one of you like to say?
We, okay, in the row, can we make a condition for the fence, if we X type of fence, if not, I'm sorry, we don't wanna change it there.
It's there.
Well, the, the fence has.
Yeah.
The fence provides, the fence has. So, if, if, if for some reason it gets knocked down. Rebuilt in similar fashion, provided for, or, or.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right, Ms. Davis, you are all set, uh, Tom will be getting ahold of you with your.
Thank you, I appreciate everything.
Absolutely, you have a good night. All right, do we have any other agenda items? Seeing that there is none, can we get a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, motion.